All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. First order of business is an executive session for collective bargaining. And the reason, um, the reason why I convey an executive session is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, uh, 23B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on government's bargaining or litigation position. So with that being said, um, because we're a virtual meeting, it's going to require roll call vote anyway. So what is the pleasure of the board to enter executive session to have a motion?
So motion.
So it's seven o'clock a little bit behind, but that's okay. It's a 2020, uh, 2022 budget presentation. Mr. Montori, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Yep. So, um, this is a presentation that's similar to the ones I've made in the past. Um, anybody have a question as I'm going through it, stop me. We don't have to, we don't have to wait till the end, so just jump in whenever. Um, the presentation, uh, the contents of the presentation, I'm just going to quickly review the budget process we went through. I'm going to review the expenditures for FY22, the revenues they're going to pay for the budget. Uh, then I'm going to talk specifically about the town and school budgets. Um, go over a five-year projection of the town's, uh, finances, any future items we need to monitor, and then usually just, um, wrap up with the Board of Selectmen financial policy. Just to start, uh, the budget process of FY22 started, uh, around November 1st of, uh, 2020, uh, when, but when the budget message was sent out to all the departments. Uh, the budget message, uh, asked department heads to, uh, present a level service budget for FY22 to adjust salaries, any contractual obligations, level service, their operating budgets, um, and to separately provide three top priorities that if funding became available, uh, they would want to see funded within their budget. Uh, the budgets were due back in mid-November. Uh, review of the budget took place between December 2nd and December 16th. Uh, after the last meeting with the budget, uh, the development of the budget took place between the 16th and 11th. After the budget was complete, uh, I had meetings with each of the individual Board of Selectmen to review the budget, go over any questions, issues, concerns they may have, but the final touches on the budget that's, uh, being, that's being presented tonight. Uh, the full budget, um, was sent to the Finance Committee today. Uh, it'll be uploaded to the website tomorrow, uh, and the Finance Committee will begin their budget, uh, review with department heads on January 27th. Uh, we're a few weeks behind schedule compared to last year, but really, uh, on schedule compared to where we've been over the last few years, so we're doing pretty well. Uh, first thing I want to go over is a summary of the revenues and expenditures. Um, I want to begin by, uh, reviewing the expenditures that we need to appropriate funds for, and that include the town and school budget, any other local expenditures and our state and county charges. And I'm going to review the main revenues that fund, uh, the town budget, which include the town's property tax levy, state aid received from the Commonwealth, our own local receipts that we, uh, charge, and any other available funds that will help pay for the budget. So again, the first item I'm going to discuss is the expenditures. Uh, this first sheet, uh, is part of a recap sheet that I do every year, uh, that gets updated throughout the entire budget process. Uh, this is the first, um, first attempt at, uh, what we call the recap sheet, and it starts with the general fund budget. Uh, the general fund budget for FY22, the projected budget is listed on the first line. It's $122,863,932. That's based on what has been presented and, uh, approved or recommended by me, uh, for the FY22 budget. It's an increase over FY21, uh, in the amount of two, by $2,142,999. What needs to get added to that is the, uh, three lines, the third line on this sheet. I set aside $483,281 as what is called a reserve for appropriation. Those are funds that are set aside that will be built back into the budget, uh, once, uh, we decide on our collective bargaining agreements and cost of living increases for employees. Adding both the, uh, increase in the budget in that $483,000, that would bring the increase of the budget to $2,626,280. That increase includes both the town side and the school side. That also includes all of our exempt debt, uh, any other debt that we have and all of our fixed costs. So that's the entire budget. In addition to the budget, we need to raise and appropriate funds in other areas that we need to pay for. The first is what we call charity sheet offsets. This is money we receive from the Commonwealth, uh, for our public library. Uh, these funds need to be appropriated, and then we receive money back on the, uh, on the, in our local aid, uh, to fund those offsets, and that's $49,291. We also need to raise funds to pay for our overlay reserve. $650,000 is being budgeted for, um, abatements and exemptions, uh, that the assessors, uh, provide, uh, for real estate, real estate taxes. Um, in addition to that, we need to set aside funds to pay back the teacher salary deferral that the town took advantage of in 2009. This should be the last year that we have to raise money, uh, for the teacher deferral. Uh, we do see a benefit further down in this, uh, in the recap sheet that I'll go over a little bit later, but this is, uh, the amount we need to pay back for the teacher deferral of salaries that took place in 2009. And then, uh, also, we need to set aside, uh, an appropriation to pay for our state and county charges. Uh, I projected a 10% increase to the state and county charges that we see each year that come, uh, that were assessed when we get our local aid. Uh, they have to do with, uh, mosquito control projects, which is the, uh, which is the mosquito control, um, operation that, that is run, that, uh, sprays for mosquitoes in the summer, uh, throughout each of the communities in our county. Uh, other area that stick out on this list is regional transit, the low of regional transit, our assessment of three, I projected, uh, a 10% increase of 313,586, uh, that, that may come, that may come in lower. Uh, we set aside funds for, uh, school choice, uh, tuition for any students that go to another public school, we have to pay for that tuition. And then for students who go to a charter school, we're assessed the tuition for that charter school. Um, this past year for FY21, we were assessed $917,155, and I'm projecting a 10% increase to that. So when you add up all of the funds that we need to, uh, all the appropriations we need to fund in addition to the budget, the total amount that we need to set aside revenue for is $125,879,980. So it's not just the budget that we need to set aside revenue for, there are other things we need to pay for, and that's part of that $125.8 million. Any questions? Can I leave this sheet? Okay. So now to discuss the revenues that we're going to, uh, use to pay for, um, the, uh, the appropriations. The biggest, uh, revenue that the town, um, generates is property tax levy. This is for all the property taxes within, within the community, uh, for, um, real estate, This slide just gives you an idea of what I just mentioned on how we develop the Proposition 2.5's levy limit. These are just illustrative numbers. If the previous year's levy limit was $10 million, we would add 2.5% to it. If new growth was projected at $200,000, we would add that to it to come up with the new levy limit of $10,450,000. That's the maximum we can tax at unless we do an override or a debt exclusion. If you have a debt exclusion, you would add the amount of the debt service that you need to pay back, which on this chart is $1 million, which will bring our levy limit to $11,450,000. And that's how we derive our property tax levy each year.
Mr. Chairman, to the town manager, quick question. You're talking about new growth. What is the date that we're taking the new growth date from of the amount to come up with that?
So it's everything from January 1st. So for FY22's new growth, it's everything from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. Whatever growth was captured in that period of time and is assessed as of January 1st. So whatever that is, we will put together as far as new value and new growth to our tax levy. It gets certified in the fall, and we use the current tax rate to generate the new growth. So it's almost a year behind, Mark.
Okay, it's a calendar year, though. That's what we're doing.
It's a calendar year, yes.
Okay, okay. No, that's all right. Thank you.
Mr. Montori, just to bounce up maybe to the first slide. You know, the bottom line question to residents is, you know, how much of my tax is going to go up if approved? You know, if we go through the budget season, if approved, year over year? Do you have that number?
Yeah, I'll get, can I give you a couple more slides and I'll get there?
All right, perfect. Yep, perfect.
So this just gives you a history of our new growth that I was just mentioning, what gets added to the levy. And as you can see, we've had good, decent growth over the past 10, 11 years. But you can see how it does fluctuate. What's interesting about the new growth in the community, a lot of it has come from utilities. That's National Grid and the work that they've done in the community. They've made up a large portion of our, of our personal property tax. And our personal property tax has made up a large portion of our overall growth. As you can see, in FY21 especially, there was not a lot, not a lot of residential growth. And as you can also see, the commercial growth has really slowed in the previous years, although fiscal '21 was the first time it was closer to the residential growth in a long, in a long time. So this just, this just gives you an idea of the history and the breakdown of what makes up our new growth. So again, this is just back to that recap sheet that I develop each year as a summary of our revenues and expenditures. This is the projected levy limit for FY2022. The previous year's levy limit was $85,74,473. Add a 2.5% is to $2,126,862. And then we add the new growth to that amount to come up with a levy limit projection of $88,51,334. It's an increase to the levy of $2.9 million. Now, what we add to that $88 million each year is our debt exclusion number. And we have a high amount of debt exclusion, debt excluded in this community. So we need to add $12 million to that $88 million to come up with the $100,44,219 as our projected levy limit for FY22. And the debt exclusion or the excluded debt includes the fire station, the elementary school, the high school, other buildings in town that were done within the last 10 to 20 years that were still paying off debt. But that's a pretty large number, especially when you compare it to other communities. We're on the higher side, but that gets added to our taxes and added to the levy limit. Now to go to the chairman's question earlier, this is a snapshot of the history of our levy limit, of what we've, our total levy amount, and our tax rates, our single-family home values, our residential condos, our commercial, average commercial value, and our average single-family home taxes. And shaded in yellow is what we're projecting for FY22, based on the levy increase. We're projecting that the, we're projecting that the average single-family home will increase $196 if all of the values stayed the same, our shift stayed the same, and the percentage breakdown of the levy stayed the same. We're projecting the average condo to increase $147, and the average commercial $638. Now again, that's based on this levy increase, and that's based on if all of our, again, recap, current recap values and shifts stay the same. This next slide just kind of zeroes in on that yellow, that yellow shaded area to give you an idea of the tax impact. So I think, Mr. Chairman, I think this answers your question that you asked earlier?
No, it does. Thank you. And the other obvious question would be around COVID. You know, this is a little bit unique and, you know, with the pandemic and all, Mr. Montori. So how does what we're going through now potentially or not potentially impact what we're talking about, you know, today versus six months from now or 12 months from now?
Yeah, I mean, it's a big unknown. And as you'll see when I go through the revenue projections, how we've adjusted in some areas for COVID. But the biggest question's going to be, and I'll get to it a little further in, is going to be, it's going to be what's the state aid going to look like for our community? That's going to be the big question. I think we've adjusted everywhere else accordingly, but the big question's going to be state aid. And it's going to be an interesting year for our, you know, and the chief assessor mentioned this the other day. It's going to be an interesting year because we're just not sure where value is going to fall. You know, from a residential standpoint, from a commercial standpoint, based on any businesses that may have, businesses that are vacant, things like that. So it would definitely be an interesting year. So one of the things that always is brought up in the next two slides I'll go through briefly, it kind of illustrates, you know, because there's always questions about tax increases and about keeping taxes from not increasing, you know, keep them level, which is, which is almost impossible with, with the town budget. In order to keep taxes the same and not have them increase, that $2.6 million increase that I mentioned earlier would have to not, not increase within the budget. The tax levy would not increase by that $2.6 million as recommended. And if that's the case, it's just very difficult within a budget, even though it's a budget of $122.8 million. You know, of that budget, you know, $55 million of it is tied up in salaries for town and school. So if you, if you want to cut that $2.6 million, you're talking about cutting salaries, which means cutting personnel. Also, in addition to $55 million in salary, we have other expenses tied up in approximately $69 million worth of budgets. And that includes things like town and school operating budgets, Shawshing Regional Vocational Tech, our SAGI tech assessment, our capital account, and our unclassified accounts make up about $69.8 million of that, of the remaining budget. Of that amount, $62.9 million is either, either can't be cut or extremely difficult to cut, which leaves about $6.9 million of discretionary funds that could be cut to make up that $2.6 million. And if you cut $2.6 million out of that remaining $6.9, it's just going to be a reduction in services at all levels of our budgets, education, public safety, and just TPW and overall service delivery to the community. This next slide gives you a list of what makes up that $62.9 million that is difficult to cut or can't be cut. And I'm not going to go through the whole list, but as you can see, just starting at the top, you're not going to cut back snow and ice. It's not that big of a budget to begin with. You're not going to cut solid waste budget because people want trash picked up. You know, we need to operate our financial software in town. That's a, that's a cost, our elections are a, are a cost that we really need to have in place. You know, our workers' comp, our town workers' comp, and our other property and liability insurances can't be cut. We can't cut our debt, which is major, which is, makes up about $12 million worth of this budget. You know, our Shawshing tech assessment is $7.3 million of the $62 million amount. So if you go through this list, you really, you start to see quickly that it's just not easy to make any cuts to eliminate that $2.6 million to have no tax increase. So it's just something that I want to, I like to illustrate when I present the budget to show that, one, it's difficult to avoid the tax increase, and two, this budget really doesn't have any, what I would call frills in it. It's a very solid budget that is level service, and it, and it's, you know, it doesn't have any expenditures in here that I would say are, I guess, the only reviews as frivolous or you could really say are not needed. Just staying on the taxes for a moment, this gives you an idea where we stand as a community compared to other communities. For FY21, our average tax bill was $7,152. We're sort of in the, we're in the mid-range, so low and mid-range of where our, the communities around us stand. So that just gives you an idea. Even with the proposed tax increase, we still would be in the same area that we are here. We wouldn't, even with that $196 average increase, we would not go above any of the communities that are currently above us. Further into revenues, as I mentioned earlier, and as the chairman had pointed out, the challenges coming up because of COVID. I'm projecting state aid to be level funded. This is the one area that is an unknown for us. The state has not told us yet whether state aid will be level funded, whether it will be increased or whether it will be cut. The governor will announce probably his budget in the next week or two. Right now, I have us projected at a level funded state aid because there has been no indication otherwise. If state aid is cut, we'll have to make adjustments within the budget or in other areas to make up for it. But I'll discuss that as we move further into the presentation. Local receipts, we already made adjustments. These are, these are areas, and I'll get into detail in a minute. This is, these are revenues that we collect locally that are not generated by the Commonwealth. There are our local fees, charges, taxes, in addition to our property taxes that help pay for our appropriations. This has a minor increase of $16,776 over FY21. But FY21 saw a significant decrease in areas because of COVID, specifically hotel motel tax and meals tax. Now, just to go into each of these receipts a little bit more in more detail. On this first slide, the first revenue in this slide is motor vehicle excise tax. This is our largest local receipt that we generate. This is for a tax on motor vehicles based on Mass. General Laws Chapter 68, which assesses the value of the vehicles at $25 per thousand. The projection for FY22 is based on the actual we collected in FY21, and it's based on 90% of that actual. We're seeing motor vehicle come in a little bit lower in the first quarter of revenue than we have in the previous years. As you can see, in FY19, we took in $5.3 million in actual motor vehicle revenue. And in FY20, we dropped that, that dropped down to $5,24,000. So it was a little concerning that we may be seeing a decline in our, this revenue. So we, the projection was based on 90% of FY20. Meals tax, this is a tax on 0.75% of the gross receipts of a vendor from sales of restaurant meals. This is something the town adopted almost 10 years ago. This tax was one of the taxes that was, one of the fees that was hurt greatly during COVID. As you can see, in FY19, FY18, and FY17, we took in over, all over $1 million in revenue for meals taxes. In FY20, we took in $957,000. Fourth quarter meals tax, obviously, was extremely low because of COVID. And the projection for FY22 is based on that fourth quarter revenue and annualizing it over the four quarters and coming up with a new projection of $422,142. As you know, from this first six months of this fiscal year, we're not seeing much of a change in the, in, in people going to restaurants. So we're projecting the meals tax to be lower going forward. Hotel motel tax, another area that was impacted by COVID. We're, we're most concerned about this tax because of the hotel industry taking probably the biggest hit during this pandemic. Although the hotels are still operating and having some occupancy, their room rates are extremely low compared to previous years. We are projecting hotel motel tax for FY22 to be similar to FY21, whereas we took the fourth quarter in our fiscal year '20 collection and annualized it over the four quarters, coming up with this revenue projection of $349,656. Now hopefully, at some point in FY22, we see these, see the meals tax and hotel tax come back. But there's still a concern that there may be a lag in this for at least through FY22. Moving on to other revenues, local revenues, other excises. This is just a minor amount for our, for boat tax for people on boats in town. As you can see, it's not a lot of, a lot of money. We do a five-year average for our FY22 projection. Penalties and interest on late payment of taxes and fees. This is based on, this revenue projection for FY22 is based on 90% of the actual FY20 revenue. You know, hopefully, we don't see a major increase in this area. That means people are paying their bills late, which is never a good thing, especially from an economic standpoint. But we're projecting this to be 90% of our FY20 actual. Payment lieu taxes, this is the next item, which is the acronym PILOT. This is for property that the housing authority owns. It is based on agreements we have for the, from the housing authority for their properties. Based on these agreements, we're projecting $17,062 in FY22. Charges for services, this is for our ambulance. These are fees charged for, for ambulance runs, and it's based on Medicare allowable rates. It charges 250% over the 2019 Medicare allowable rates, which is similar to what other communities do. For this particular revenue, we're projecting 90% of our FY19 actual revenue instead of the FY20 actual revenue. And the reason for that, FY20 revenue was higher than normal. We had a higher Medicare reimbursement in FY20, and we had a higher fourth quarter collection than we normally would have in our fourth quarter collection. So to be on the safe side, we projected 90% of our FY19 actual for this revenue projection. This also is contingent upon how often we run a 30 ambulance in the community. We've been fortunate to receive state funding over the past few years to help run a 30 ambulance during certain shifts. But in FY21, that funding was cut, so we won't run that 30 ambulance as often as we would like, if at all. So that'll have an impact to our revenue. Next item, fees. These are fees charged by departments for services, services such as police details, any sale and retention measure fees, inspections, reports. This projection is also based on 90% of our FY20 actual. Since the, the five-year projection or the projection from previous fiscal years is unrealistic, as you can see from this list, we have a bump in our actual collections in FY19. As you can see from this list, we have a bump in our actual collections in FY19. We had a high, a very high number in FY16 and that was due to some very unique circumstances. National Grid had a strike that caused our police details to be higher than normal. So that makes doing five-year or three-year averages unrealistic. So we did 90% of the FY20 actual. Rentals, this is specifically rentals of our, of town property for our wireless communication carriers. This is based on what we're projecting for our revenue through our contracts. As you can see in FY20, we had a higher than normal collection that year and that was because one carrier owed us money from previous years that finally came in in FY20. But we've only taken $400, $430,000 in revenue based on those contracts. Other department for revenue, there's no projection in this amount. These fees are allocated to other classifications in our revenue. License and permits, these are fees charged by departments for license and permits such as our liquor license, for establishment licenses, building, electrical, plumbing and gas permits, IPW permits, water health permits. This year's projection for FY22 projection is based on really an analysis of our last three, four or five years of our fees, our licensing permits fees. And the unique, there were some very unique collections during those years that were pulled out because of some high-value building permits, high-value electric and plumbing permits for those years. Those were pulled out and then a three, four or a five-year average was used for various fees to come up with the projection of 850, 672. But we spent some time really looking at the fees in each of the categories to pull out anything that was unique. And as you can see in FY16 and 17, those permit fees were high, especially for building, electric and plumbing, because we've had some very large projects going on in the community. Fines and forfeitures, this revenue is some court fines, parking fines, library fines and zoning fines. We projected 90% of FY20 actual. The expectation is these fees will start to come in low because the library is no longer charging fines for their books. So that revenue, I think it was approximately $17,000, will no longer be coming in. So that was taken out of this projection also. Interest earnings, this was based on 90% of FY, our three-year average of FY15 through 17, instead of 90% of FY20 actual. And the reason for that is in FY20, we had a very high amount of interest earnings because of the high, because of the elementary school and the fire station. Those bond issues generated $1.2 million in revenue to our interest earnings, which you won't see in the future. So it was more realistic to take the actual 15, 16 and 17 and take a three-year average of those for our projection for FY22, especially since interest rates are at an all-time low right now. So that $81,004 was the three-year average and then 90% of that. Miscellaneous stint, another revenue, there's no projection because no revenue is expected. Medicaid reimbursement, revenue from the federal government that we're, that's provided to us for children within the school system that are eligible and enrolled in mass health. The projection of $88,653 is based on 90% of the FY20 actual. Recurring revenue, there's no projection for FY22 because this is revenue we just don't rely upon. It's based on deferred real estate taxes, which is not something we can rely upon any Medicaid. We used to get a Medicaid drug subsidy that we no longer get and any other Medicaid reimbursements from the federal government that we just can't rely on. And as you can see from this list, it does fluctuate. If you went back even further than FY16, the revenue is even lower than that. So it's just not a revenue we project or that the department of revenue likes us to project when we're setting our recap sheet. Same thing for the next one, which is non-recurring revenue. These are reimbursements or grant reimbursements from FEMA or MEMR that we never know if we're getting. And again, as you can see from this revenue, it fluctuates greatly. So again, it's not a revenue that the department of revenue likes seeing projected when we set our local receipts. Any questions on local receipts?
Richard. Go right ahead.
No, go ahead, Mark. You can go first. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Richard, I remember last year when we were collecting revenues, taxes were coming in and we waived some of the, because they came in late because COVID, it was, we're just getting to those beginning phases. Were those revenues impacting when we're doing the average of, of late fees and those averages? I know you mentioned that again this year and hopefully we don't get those type of things. And, and if we do get. Taxes are doing work, pretty much what we did last year.
Yeah. Is that in regard to the license fees, Mark, that we went and were waived?
Yeah. Well, it was the, it was the, also the taxes, we, when the taxes were due last year, we, you know, they didn't, a lot of because of the bills going out and how you were going to pay it and what was going on and, and everything that was happening. We changed the time people were paying them. So obviously there's no late fees.
Yeah. So late fees weren't charged and that, that would have impacted our last fiscal year more. But you know, we, we didn't have to, we weren't charging late fees because of the extended dates. So we don't anticipate that impacting us at all in FY22. We might see some residual of that in this current fiscal year. But for our projections going forward into FY22, none of that was taken into consideration because we don't believe there should be an impact. Now, to your point, if they do it again, we may have to have that discussion, but right now we don't anticipate that happening.
Yeah, I just, you know, I don't want it to be a revenue source for the town. People are having difficulty paying their bills and we come up against that and we find out that's what we're going to.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it shouldn't be an additional revenue source for us because of that. Again, if anything, they waived those fees and we weren't allowed to charge them. So we don't anticipate any impacts.
And another thing you had mentioned, you know, when looking at these things, that interest rates at our all-time low. You know, I, I know in the past we've refinanced existing outstanding debt. Was there any look at that to try to help with this, offset this budget? Because I know we always put the budget together and there'll be a story about how taxes are going up. But then there's never a follow-up story about if we refinance and, you know, and taxes actually reduced because of the refinance. So I just want to bring that up while we're going through this budget.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great point, Mark. We, as you know, we refinance, we did a borrowing this past fall. We had an extremely good interest rate. We refinanced some debt and saved funds on our debt, our excluded debt, as well as our water and sewer enterprise funds. And we'll look at that again if we do a borrowing next year to see what's available to refinance. But everything through this fiscal year that we were able to refinance, we refinanced.
What was the savings when, at the right refinance at that point? Just the ballpark for you, Mark?
Yeah, it's probably a few hundred thousand dollars on our debt exclusion, maybe, maybe $200,000 to $300,000.
That's, that's a lot of money. So yeah, that's great news. Okay.
Paul Mistronek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is not so much for this year's budget, which I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I know that this is months in the making and I want to thank the department heads for their work putting this together too, which, but really what I want to talk about is as we're talking about these revenue streams and this year, we actually had to make some decisions because of COVID. And I just didn't know if you could speak overall. I'm thinking specifically of the DPW project that we kind of moved the needle on a little bit and how we were able to stay on budget. And just kind of want to say where we are all very concerned about the upcoming budget and what that's going to present. But I think that the conservative budget that you typically present, and I think that this is no different, gives us a little bit of room if we need to do some breathing. And I didn't know if you could speak to that, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, absolutely. So for FY21, the current fiscal year, with the impact of COVID to our revenue, going into fall town meeting, we adjusted revenue for our local receipts downward. We adjusted the hotel motel tax, we adjusted the meals tax. We adjusted a few other areas that were close to a million dollars worth of revenue that we adjusted downward. We were able to increase our new growth projection from $850,000 to, I believe it was about $1.1 million in new growth. That helped offset some of that reduction in revenue. And then to make up the rest, we had, we had in the FY20 budget funds for the, for debt service for the DPW school maintenance facility. We put that project on hold, took that money out of the budget in between the, and that helped make up for the remaining shortfalls due to, due to the cuts in revenue that we made.
Thank you. I appreciate the work on that. So similarly, when we're talking about these revenues and the drops in revenues, we may have to make adjustments next year for things that, with a little bit of wiggle room that is within the budget in those decisions, I am assuming will be made as they were this year.
Correct. And I'll go through that as we go through it. And just to go back, new growth actually came in at 1.4 million and I had projected 850. So that helped offset the revenue reduction that we had.
That's what I was talking about with that conservative plan.
Yep. So hopefully, you know, we, we have the same safeguards in place and I'll go through those as we go through the budget. But, you know, we've already made our adjustments to our local receipts. So I think we're good there. The biggest question is going to be what happens with our state aid.
Thank you.
And then, and just one last thing, in addition, in addition, if we really get cut harder, things should get more difficult. We put money in the stabilization fund this past fall. We have a little over $8 million in that fund that we can go to for any emergencies to get through any bad, bad revenue shortfalls that we might have.
Can, I'm sorry, can you repeat that just one more time? You cut out on my end.
So in the fall, we put money in the stabilization fund.
Yes.
Brought the stabilization fund up to $8.5 million. So if we run into any real difficult economic times, shortfalls in revenue difficulties, and we want to maintain services, until we get into better economic times, we can go to stabilization fund.
Okay. Appreciate that. That's all, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the indulgence.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. The last area on the recap sheet, other available funds. We were able to use $86,600 as a benefit from the teacher deferral. And again, this will be the last year, I believe, that we can do that. So this brings us to a balanced budget. Our revenues will be the $125,879,980, which will balance the FY22 budget. These two charts just give you an idea of what the breakdown of our revenue is in the community. In FY21, 68% of our revenue was property taxes. And in FY22, a projection 79.5. This is a summary.
Mr. Montori, maybe just go back one, please?
Yep.
As far as the purple, the other available funds, right now we're just kind of predicting, being super, 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 super conservative and saying they're not going to be there. However, asterisk or whatever, there is a little potential we could have those other available funds. Is that kind of how you're seeing it, just playing super conservative?
Yeah. We will definitely have those funds. That's funds that made up when we go to town meeting, when it's not adding more things. So that'll reduce the burden of property taxes. But you're right, Mr. Chairman, we'll see that, those other available funds increase.
Was there any consideration to put 5% or 10% or you just feel that, you're just trying to be that conservative based on the outlook that? You'd rather keep it at zero?
It's not, it's, it's, it's zero at the moment. We'll still collect the same amount of property taxes. It'll just show a different burden as we split the revenue up.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question on that, just with, with Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. So when you, Mr. Montori, when you say it's going to take the burden off the property taxes, I was confused on that.
It doesn't really take the burden off the property taxes. It just splits the pie differently.
So the pie is going to just look a little differently?
The pie will just look differently. Correct.
So that, so when you say, so the, the increase of the 2.7% on an average family home is going to stay 2.7%?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So when you look at this next slide, if you go down to the sources of revenue, the property taxes really won't change, but where you see other available funds at $86,000 will probably increase when we add the enterprise funds in and things like that. And it just shifts the percentage, what makes up our total revenue in the community. So in FY21, the total revenue was $142,012.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just make a quick comment on this slide. So, you know, I, it kind of goes back to, before we go further, you know, from what the other two, Mrs. Stronik and Mr. Kravitz said, I mean, if you look at the rev, the major revenue sources are, are flat for the year. And when you talk about the percentage increase of 2.7% or $196 on average for an average family home, when you're talking no new hired positions, level service, when your major revenue sources are flat and if you go back to like 2020, Mr. Montori, it looks like everything's down 10 to 50% from 2020, right? I mean, those major revenue sources, we continue to maintain a very strong budget and we're trying to limit the tax implications on the residents or the commercial businesses. And I see that wholeheartedly in this, in this budget. And then you have to look at, on this, on this slide right here, if you go to the, again, those debt exclusions at 11 or 12 million dollars that were voted on by the residents, you have to understand when we talk about tax increase, I guess. And a 2.7% increase is, is not too bad when you have $12 million debt exclusion, correct?
Yeah, I think that's a, it's a great point, Mr. Dick. I think if you look at this, this summary sheet here, you know, the property taxes on that first line under the sources of funding has stayed within the proposition two and a half guidelines. You know, we've increased 2.5% of the levy limit, we've added our new growth. But the real increase has been in debt exclusions. And if you took that away, we just, we have lived within proposition two and a half.
Right. And, and it looks a little different if, if we didn't vote for the new schools, the new fire station, all the things that we've done. We've given the voice to the residents and the residents have said, hey, we want these new facilities. So it comes with a price tag and it's good just to take a pause and point out that that price tag is right there in black and white. And Mr. Montori, you're trying to limit the 2.7% increase on an average family home as best you can while level servicing this budget, no new hired. no new hired positions. And I just wanted to make that point when major revenue is down the last three years. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
And just one other point, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to, to what Mr. Dick is saying. If you look at state revenue since two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty two, if our projection holds, it's only increased eight hundred thousand dollars. It's not a great amount over that time period.
And maybe, just go back, yeah, maybe just go back one? I'm sorry, one more. Okay, perfect. We didn't get too much into the sewer enterprise fund, the water enterprise fund, the stormwater enterprise fund, or the, any of the, any of the enterprise funds. So just food for thought, you know, as we, you know, may need things for these, you know, within these enterprise funds that, you know, we consider, because these are all surplus, right? I can't, it's a little bit tricky to read, but we have about north of six million in, 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 in the sewer enterprise fund, north of seven million in the water. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, that's not, that's the revenue that helps pay for those funds. So that, that's six point six million and seven point four. That's just the revenue that pays for their budgets. There's a minor, a minor surplus in each, but that's not the surplus.
Okay, fair enough, but I do believe there's a surplus in all of the above, correct? You may not have those numbers.
If you go down to the bottom, that three hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, that's the surplus generated from all of the enterprise funds, including cable, stormwater, water and sewer. That's the projected surplus for FY twenty one. Now, that obviously will be different, but that's the projected surplus.
Okay, I think the point I was going with this is, we didn't dip in the cookie jar too much for this budget at all. I, I remember you just talked about a little bit that we did got creative with the DPW facility, put that on hold essentially. But I guess the only ask, you know, on behalf of the residents is that we continue to go through, you know, our budget planning, that we look what we have in the reserves. So the enterprise funds that were fees that we collected to potentially leverage those to pay for upcoming bills. I guess that's the only point, that's all.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's a great point. So when we do look at this DPW facility, you know, we are going to look to the enterprise fund reserves to help pay for our loans.
Okay, I think we can, you know, probably jump ahead to a couple. Sorry about that, I keep on going backwards.
Nope. And I apologize for the length of the presentation, there's just a lot to cover.
Well, just to the residents, we asked for this, almost line item for line item in lieu of COVID nineteen. We know it's going to be tough, a tough year, so this was no easy way to predict the budget. But we, the board members, you know, specifically asked for this level of detail and you provided it, so, so it's all good. Yeah, Marie, Ms. Stronach?
I was just going to say, it is the most important thing that we do is put together the budget. So I really appreciate all the, and I know I said this earlier, but I appreciate the detail and I think it's important for our residents to see this as well as, I know that we sat down individually and, you know, put our thoughts into this. But it is great to see the collective work of my colleagues on this as well. So thank you for the detail.
Okay, so just going further into the budget and revenue. So one of the things we do with the new revenue in the community is we have developed a split of revenue between the town and the school. Once we determine what that new revenue is. So the new revenue, based on Proposition Two and a Half and new growth increase, any minor increase in our local receipts, in any other areas, the projected new revenue in total was three point three million dollars. From that three point three million dollars, six hundred and fifty was taken off for debt service for the new DPW school facility. Four hundred and fifteen thousand, four seventy five was, was, was taken off that amount as a projected increase to the Shawshank Tech assessment, which is approximately six percent. Thirteen thousand three, thirteen thousand seven forty nine was taken off for the Essex Aggie assessment projection, which left two million, two hundred twenty three thousand, six hundred and ninety five dollars of new revenue to the community. The way we've approached the new revenue each year is sixty percent of that new revenue will go to the schools towards their budget, both operating for salaries, operating capital outlay and fixed costs, and forty percent will go to the town. The school's new revenue gross amount was one point three million dollars. When you go down the list of fixed costs, they did not see an increase in their health insurance costs. In fact, they're going to see an increase or a decrease for them of ninety nine thousand, three sixty two because not as many people enrolled in their plans. They're going to see an increase in their retirement of five point six percent. So eighty six thousand, three fifty six was deducted from that one point three million. And they're going to see an increase in the Medicare tax, which is based on payroll. They're going to see an increase in their property and liability insurance. When you factor all of those into the gross revenue amount for them, the net revenue they have for salaries and operating is one point two million dollars that they've built into their budget for salaries, operating and capital outlay. Similar approach was taken for the town. The gross revenue at forty percent was eight hundred eighty nine thousand, four seventy eight. We are going to see an increase in our health insurance due to increased enrollment due to retirements. We're also going to see an increase in our retirement assessment of four point three percent, an increase to our Medicare tax. We are going to see a decrease in our debt, a non-exempt debt, minor amounts. We're going to see an increase of ten percent to our property and liability insurance. When you factor all of those increases and decreases to the gross amount, the remaining amount the town had to spend on its budget was four hundred eight thousand, one hundred and thirty two dollars. So that was the split in the new revenue. Just a summary of the general fund and our budget, the town budget. Net allocations without exempt debt will see an increase of one million, fifty six thousand, one hundred and ninety seven dollars. The schools will see an increase of one million, three hundred thirty four thousand, two hundred and seventeen. And then the increase to Shawshank Tech and Essex Aggie, as I mentioned earlier, for an increase of two million, two sixty, two hundred sixty two thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. That amount does not include the four hundred eighty three thousand dollars set aside that I mentioned earlier as a reserve for appropriation for, for cost of living increases. That's just strictly what's in the budget. Just gives you an idea or breakdown of both of the town and school budget within the general fund. The school is a little over fifty percent of the budget. On the town, thirty two percent of the budget in FY twenty one, not much of a change in FY twenty two. Same thing with our exempt debt, Shawshank Tech, Essex Aggie, and our, you know, the exempt debt, both the town and school, not, not a lot of change. This just gives an idea of what makes up, makes up the breakdown of the budgets. This goes into further detail regarding a breakdown of the budget. How much is salary, as you can see, makes up a large portion of the budget. Operating is the next biggest. But when you look at health insurance at ten point five percent in FY twenty one and ten point three percent in FY twenty two, and you add in retirement, you know, that's seventeen percent of the budget is tied up in those two fixed costs. And exempt debt makes another nine percent, another nine percent. So, you know, quarter, quarter of the budget is tied up in those three areas. This gives you an idea of breakdown in the town budget. This does include the money set aside for cost of living increases. This breaks down, this is a breakdown of each category within the budget that is, that we have, general government, our finance departments, community services, council on aging, you know, public safety, DPW and our, and our debt. Just gives you an idea of the, the cost of each section, sector of the budget. And this is just a breakdown of just the town's budget on its own. Forty percent of it, salary, seventeen percent. And both FY twenty one and twenty two is for operating, exempt debt. Makes up ten percent in FY twenty two, a little bit down from eleven percent in twenty one. Retirement, holding steady around fifteen percent, health insurance at ten percent. But again, when you look at both, when you look at the health insurance, retirement, exempt debt, you know, you're looking at, you know, thirty percent of the town's budget is wrapped up in those fixed costs. This breaks it down even further by department. As you can see, police, fire and DPW are our biggest budgets, making up the biggest percentage of our budgets. Our unclassified, which is mostly our fixed costs, make up a third of the budget. When you add exempt debt into that, you're talking forty percent of the budget is tied up in mostly fixed costs within the budget. So this just gives you an idea of how, how each department impacts the budget. So again, specifically into the town budget, salaries are going to increase three hundred and seventy three thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars. This includes the four hundred and eighty three thousand dollars set aside for cost of living increases. Within this salary increase, you know, includes any steps that staff are entitled to within the, within the contract or, or personnel plan. It includes any longevity changes, refilling any vacancies due to retirements. Within that three hundred and seventy three thousand dollars, fifty, fifty three thousand, six hundred has been set aside for upgrades to certain positions. The positions are mostly department heads within our grade ten for personnel, for non-union personnel. They include our finance department heads, our town engineer, IT person, town clerk, library director, HR director, facilities manager. Our DPW director and assistant town manager are being reviewed for upgrades. So that's, that's part of the, the increase of this three hundred seventy three thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars. We also saw an increase in fire overtime. This is because we have three new recruits starting in the academy next year, which will impact overtime. We did see a decrease in elections because we have less elections next fiscal year than we did this year, obviously, because of the national election. And then, as I mentioned, I've set aside four hundred eighty three thousand, two hundred and eighty one dollars as a reserve for appropriation for salary increases. And the next is the operating budget. The operating budgets are going to increase two hundred and seventy four thousand dollars in FY twenty two. And that, that's all part of the one point five million dollars that you see above. That's on the town budget will be increasing. There's no major increases within the, any of the operating accounts. This list kind of just highlights some of the ones that, from each of the categories. You know, general government actually saw a decrease in its budget because of some costs that were occurring in FY twenty one that we won't see in FY twenty two. The finance department saw an increase in their budgets because of computer software, items that we have in our professional service accounts. You know, there's nothing, just to save time to move this through, the biggest increase, fire saw an increase of fifty six thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, mostly because of utilities for the new station that will come online next year. It's going to be a larger facility that needs to be operated and also uniforms for its new recruits. DPW saw an increase mainly in the area of forestry leases and contracts to remove hazardous trees within the community. The biggest increase to the operating budget for all departments is the last line, solid waste collection and disposal contract has an increase of one hundred and eighty four thousand, seven hundred and seventy nine dollars. This is because our contract with Republic Waste is increasing three percent. And we're seeing an increase in the disposal of solid waste. Per ton cost is going from seventy five dollars and eighty cents to ninety dollars per ton in FY twenty two. So that's, that's the biggest pack to our operating budget next year. And we're going to see that increase again in FY twenty three, but not as great as you saw from twenty one to twenty two. Unclassified budgets increased one million, one hundred thirty one thousand, three hundred and forty six dollars. Six hundred and fifty of that is for the debt service for the new DPW school maintenance facility. We'll talk about that project when I present the capital budget in a few weeks. But that's where the funds are set aside in the unclassified budget. Time and budget increased three hundred and one thousand dollars. Property casualty insurance, property liability insurance, sixty six thousand. So those are the major increases that we saw on our unclassifieds. Capital outlay decreased a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars within all the budgets within the town. Our allocations from our enterprise funds increased fifty six thousand, four hundred and eighty six dollars. That just shows your breakdown of each category for water, water sewer enterprise and cable. This increase in allocations is, is like an increase in revenue to the general fund to help offset budget costs. So before I go into the next slide, any questions on the budget increases on the general fund for the town? This is just the town, not the school.
I guess just a, a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Mr. Montori, so I know there's been, you know, we went through the slide of the positions increase. And, and your reason behind that, Mr. Montori, is for just being competitive, keeping good talent within the town. That's, those, those increases, I just wanted to just mention that.
No, that, that's correct, Mr. Dick. Based on what we're seeing from other surrounding communities and even bringing in people from other communities to work here, what we've had to pay, we've just needed to adjust the salaries of people that are currently working here to keep them and to keep us competitive.
Yep, and I agree with your assessment. I, I know you've been frugal in the past on that and, and understand the market and obviously want to make sure Tuck's Berry is running on high octane, full, full speed ahead. So I appreciate that and I understand that that's already in the budget. So that's, that's, that's already allotted there.
Correct.
In that forty three, so I just want to call that out. Thank you very much.
Just to go back, I had mentioned that the fire overtime increase was for three new firefighters in the academy. It's actually six next year. So I want to correct myself on that one. Some of the priorities that weren't funded that I always like to highlight, just in case funding does become available and we want to address some items. Obviously, staffing and operating funds within the DPW is always one of our issues. Staffing in our DPW departments has really not increased over the past few years. Operating funds to maintain our roads, more of the sidewalks that we're building. Trees are always a big problem. We do support some of the drainage outside of the stormwater pond. But that's always, those are always priorities that go unfunded, that could use additional funding in the future. Additional staffing to facilities and grounds specifically to maintain buildings. We spend a lot of money on our contracted services to maintain our buildings. At some point down the road, I know the facilities director would like to bring in somebody in-house to do a lot of that work. But that's, that's something down the road. Additional staffing for the police department. I know the police chief and his priorities this year had additional staffing, a couple of positions for very specific reasons within the department that he'd like to see funding, obviously, overtime in both the police and fire is always an issue that could use additional funding, specifically on the fire department, funding to operate a thirty ambulance more often is a critical priority for the fire chief. And the council on aging, funding for the van drivers within the budget would be something the director would like to see. Right now, we pay for that out of grants. If we put it in the budget, that would put less impact on the grant. If we put it in the budget, that would put less impact on the grants and use the grants for other services. Also in the council on aging, they'd like to fund a part-time transportation coordinator to help run our vans that we operate, to alleviate what staff, other staff members are doing. The school department, obviously, it's always comes down to staffing and operating, operating funds within the school department. They always do a great job living within the revenues that are provided, but I'm sure that there are additional needs of staffing and operating costs that they could allocate funds for. And then finally, funds within the budget for our capital outlay budgets, whether it's to purchase equipment to maintain our facilities or undertake small projects. Right now, this year, we've only funded a few, a few items in our capital outlay budgets for police cruises and within facilities and grounds, a couple of small pieces of equipment, but nothing major. But just maintaining our facilities and our equipment and our vehicles within our budgets is, are always fun, are always priorities that could use additional funding. Just quickly on the school side, in the school department, obviously, we'll get into more detail when they present their budget at their public hearing, but their budget is increasing $1,334,217. Salaries are increasing a little over $1 million for cost of living increases, any step increases, contractual obligations. I don't believe there are any new positions added to their salary budget, but again, they'll provide more detail when they present their budget. Operating increase was $278,656. There was no change to the capital outlay budget. As I mentioned earlier, for their fixed costs, their net increase was $50,580. They saw a decrease in their health insurance budget because there was, there were not as many people enrolled in their health insurance as projected. Retirement assessments going up $86,356. Property and liability $42,891. And Medicare tax $20,695. And then the last two items that I mentioned earlier, that adjusts projections at this point, Shawshank Tech increasing $415,476. I'll know better what that figure is going to be in the next couple of weeks. Sometimes it's over what I project, sometimes it's under and we'll adjust accordingly. And Essex Ag, we really don't know that final number until next August. And if there's any impact to that budget up or down, we can adjust in the fall. This is just a breakdown of the school budget itself. You can see 52% of it's made up of salary, 10% of it is exempt debt. Health insurance and retirement make up another 13%. So as you can see, most of this budget is really tied up in salary costs for operating the school department. Now each year, I, I look at a five-year projection for our budgets and our forecasting of expenditures and revenues. This slide gives you an idea of the projection going forward. As you can see, FY '22 is balanced in the out years based on some very small growth in revenue and expenses, you know, where we're a tight budget. We're down, we're close to balanced. In the last year of the five-year projection, we have a deficit, which hopefully by the time we get there, we'll be able to adjust. This, this just gives you a good indication that it will be tight over the next, you know, five years with our budgets, based on what we believe our revenues are going to be coming in. Some of the areas that we're going to monitor over the next year and obviously beyond will be state aid. That's the one figure we're going to, we're going to focus on over the next few weeks. And then, once the governor presents his state aid recommendation, we'll monitor how things go over the, through the House and the Senate. State and county charges always fluctuate. Big part of that again is our child of school assessment and our school choice, tuition. Those are things that are unpredictable for us. The federal budget, you know, whether we're going to continue to get reimbursements that we have seen through Medicaid for schools, our Medicare reimbursements for our ambulance. It's just going to be very difficult to determine based on how the federal budget's going to look, what type of requirements can be put on us as a new administration comes in, and will be something we'll monitor. Solid waste and recycling costs, as we saw the big impact this year, I believe we'll see another impact going into FY '23. And then after that, when we renegotiate our new solid waste contract, I believe we're going to see a higher increase in our recycling costs because, you know, it's been more difficult to dispose of recyclables than ever. The markets have closed down, so unless something else happens, I think we'll see our recycling costs increase the next time we negotiate a contract. Shawshank Tech assessment is always an unknown. We always do see at least a 3% to 4%, maybe 5% increase each year, so we'll keep an eye on that. Our unfunded liabilities for retirement, no PEB, I believe our retirement assessment's probably going to jump over 6% from FY '22 to FY '23. So we'll monitor that. Right now, we have a specific amount in our budgets for our OPEB liability, which is around $80 million. It always would be good to fund more than that amount that we have. We have $650,000 in the budget, but anything we can do to pay more towards that will always be helpful. Our stabilization fund, I believe this fiscal year we'll be using a good portion of it to help fund some equipment and capital expenditures, expenditures that were put off in FY '21. Replenishing it in the future will be key. Currently, our balance is $8.5 million. It's about 7%, a little over 7% of our total budget. We always have a goal of staying between 5% and 10% of our total budget, so we're above that 5%, which is good. But the closer we get to 10% is better for us in regard to getting an increase in our bond rating. Our capital improvement projects such as roads, sidewalks, drainage and buildings are always something that we want to keep in the forefront. We don't want to have anything fall behind there, cost us more in the future. So, you know, continuing to do capital improvements to our roads, to sidewalks, to drainage with our stormwater drainage enterprise fund, to our buildings is going to be important. Even when we get into some difficult times, doing some of these things will be important. And then finally, we always have the goal of increasing our bond rating from AA plus to AAA. Hopefully, in the next couple of years, we see that. We've had very strong financial reports from standard and pause in the past, and hopefully that continues. And then this is, this is just the selectmen's financial policy, some items that, the main points that were pulled out. And I just show this in the report without going over the detail, just go, it just kind of highlights the policy that the board has and how this budget, when it was developed, met those goals. And as we go through the budget, not just the one we're developing, but finishing the budget that we're in, adjusting the budget in the fall, we always keep the selectmen's financial policies in the forefront and we're always living within them and maintaining them. And that is it.
All right, Mr. Montori, that was a lot. Thank you very much. Let's open up to the board for comments, questions, anything on the budget?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a couple of quick comments.
Please.
My stomach's growling, but I'll make a few over, if you can hear that, that's my stomach. Anyway, the, you know, the DPW, I know we talked about that as kind of a, kind of, if there's a hole in the dike, you're going to plug that with that DPW money set aside. And I'm, I'm in favor of the DPW. I think that was something that was talked about, was a hard fight to get approved at town meeting. And if there's any way to, and I know it depends on state aid, but I'm just making the, making the point coming from me, my opinion is, I know it can be a kind of a quick grab and go. If there's any way to not do that, I'd appreciate that as a selectman. I think the 2.7% increase, and I'll refer again to my comments that, you know, with, with revenue being a flat 2.7% and with the debt exemption in the amount of 12 million, I think that's a pretty, a pretty good number on an average resident. If, if you didn't have the debt exemptions that were all voted on by the residents, then, then I know that the number's down below 2.7% this year. I appreciate the collaboration with the schools. I think Mr. Libby does a fantastic job working with Mr. Montori and his staff on making sure that there's no frivolous spending there. And, and it appears to be the case going through the budget that they're just showing, you know, basically what, what they need to operate on, on a pretty slim budget there. So pointing out that, again, there's no new positions in this budget, as Mr. Montori mentioned, and maintaining the service, again, on some really tough revenue numbers. Calling out, you know, I know from previous town meetings and, and there's always residents very concerned with maintenance of our town buildings. So we're building these beautiful buildings and whether it's a fire station, the library, the town hall, the, the two schools, all our other schools, you know, making sure that we, we have enough maintenance money in the budget, stress that for those residents that are very concerned about the maintenance of those buildings. You want to make sure that we, we allot plenty of money for, for that, which I see within the budget. I'd like to see, just finishing up, the great, the forecasting, I think Mr. Montori did a great job tonight forecasting out the year FY '27 and pointing out how hard and tight it's going to be over the next five years. It's good to understand from a board perspective. And then the fiscal policy, always staying true to that policy, it's good to highlight that at the end. I think, you know, having a balance in there at 8.5 million, that's a great number to have in years past is, is maybe Mr. Krabman, Mr. Stronach can understand from years past, not having that, that amount of money, but 8.5 million, I really like what we're doing, trying to get to that AAA bond rating. My only question is, other than the state aid, Mr. Montori, do you have any other big concerns this year, meeting our budget numbers for FY '21, '22? And then I kind of add, in the next year or five years, other than the DPW, is there any other projects you see on the rise?
So from a budgetary concern, state aid will be number one. I'm not sure, you know, new growth is going to be an interesting revenue in FY '22. You know, looking at where we are as of January 1st this year with developments and knowing what we've already received from the utilities and personal property, that'll be an interesting one going into FY '22 and that'll be watched closely. And then just the, you know, from our local receipt standpoint, the hotel motel and meals tax, you know, if things really do get better, are we going to see restaurants stay open and get, become viable again? Will the hotel industry make a comeback? So those are the things that I guess to go to, to us over the next few, few months and just businesses in general in town.
Yeah. Okay.
And will they maintain their values?
And then that, 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 anything you see from a infrastructure, that you like the DPW that we've talked about, any gutters or any thought, thought process in the next one to five years?
Yeah, no, it's so, so the DPW facility will be the last big, major building project. And the money that we have set aside really is for the first phase of the project. And we should have been more clear on that. So the $650,000 that's set aside would be to start phase one, which is about $14.8 million. And then hopefully funding is available for the second phase, which is another $14.8 million. But after the DPW project, from a building standpoint, improvements to the, the salt station will be not a major project, but it will still be close to $2 million. Some improvements to roofs, different buildings will be some of the big capital items. But from an infrastructure project, I think the biggest project you'll see that are in the general fund, you know, we probably want to start looking at doing more with our roads than just using our chapter 90 money to do our roads. You know, a million dollars towards our roads each year probably isn't enough to keep up with what really needs to be done. And obviously sidewalks are a big issue in town, addressing those also.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for that time. I'm all, I'm all set. Thanks, Mr. Montori, for tonight.
Very good. How about, Ms. Tronick?
Sorry, I was on read. Thank you so much for that presentation. Brian just asked some of the questions that I was going to ask. Look forward to this process unraveling with the remaining, you know, the FinCom taking a look at this and then bringing the enterprise funds. This is just the beginning of the budget process, which takes several months. I always reflect back on my first years on the board when we were doing this in May, rushing it out the door, so, well, April, rushing it out the door for May town meeting. So I just appreciate all the detail that was provided tonight and all the work that was done by many individuals to make this happen and the thoughtful questions that were presented by my colleagues. So thank you very much, but I have nothing, no other questions at this time, but I'm going to reserve the right to come back with some.
All right, fair enough. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. I want to thank the town manager for his excellent presentation tonight and his time last week to go over this with us individually and answer those questions then as well, you know, allow us the time to kind of get into the nitty gritty. And I want to thank the department heads and all the staff for their contributions to this rather profound document. So a few, a few items, I wanted, if I understood it correctly, the average homeowner's tax fee of $196 residential. And based on the, the matrix that you presented, that's the lowest increase over the last six years. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Like slide six or something?
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah, so that's considering, we're coming out of a, you know, we're in a COVID environment and it's going to impact us for this year, FY '22 and probably another year. That's good news for our, for our homeowners. I wanted to say that I agreed with your methodology for projections with regard to our municipal taxes, so when it comes to excise taxes and so forth. I wondered if you're getting any sort of leading indicators. I think I asked you this before, but are you seeing anything at all with regard to those, those items that have to be, that you brought down by 90% or whatever it was, or took 90% of the half your projection? Just that might indicate which way it's going, i.e. are excise taxes starting to rise or are they falling? That kind of thing. Are you getting anything like that in real time?
So in the, when I compared, using excise tax as an example, when I compared the commitments that we had this July to the previous July, we were lower this year.
Right.
So that was a concern, but we really aren't going to see a big, to understand our revenues till we get into the third quarter.
Yep.
Because we get our biggest excise commitment February, March, so I'll have a better indication then. Our hotel, our meals tax and our hotel motel tax were higher than I expected in the summer, in the first quarter, but they could have been lagged, it could have been lagged there from the state. So it was just, it's a little bit too early to tell, but I'll know better in the third quarter.
Okay. So that'll be, that's something that I'm, I'm looking at. So the weird question that you reiterated a few times, we don't know what's going to happen with state aid. And we expect the governor to present his budget, what, next week, next month?
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually at the end of January. The Mass Municipal Association has a The Mass Municipal Association has its annual conference at the end of this week, and historically, he has gone to that conference and given an indication of what state aid's going to look like.
Yeah.
Not sure if he's ready this year or not.
I, I'm going to that conference, and I was looking to see if he, I know he's talking, but there's nothing indicating what he's going to do, so it'll be...
And we've heard nothing from anyone in regard to it. So they just finished the FY21 budget not too long ago.
Yeah.
So it's hard to say if they're ready to roll out to '22.
Yeah, I know, I think that too. So it's something that we'll be paying close attention to. I wanted to echo my disappointment that there were no additional funds in the budget for our ambulance so that we could run our third ambulance more often. It is an essential part of our services to the town and particularly to service the state hospital. And so I expressed my disappointment to our legislative delegation personally, and I think that it's something worth considering, adding that to what they give to us anyway in their, in their annual budget and not having it be an earmark, but just looking to increase that line item from the state. So it's not this, you know, please, sir, can we have some more when it comes to these earmarks? And it should be part of what they are paying to us. They don't pay a pilot like some other communities get, and they do as appropriate, but use our local resources, and we need to protect that service to our community. So it's something I think that we should pursue, you know, as a board, as appropriate going forward with our legislative delegation, to find a better way to achieve that funding. Because I know, and I just want to say that I know that our first responders, our public safety departments have been on the forefront of our COVID response to the community, and I think it's really important that we acknowledge that and continue to work toward that funding for things like this, the third ambulance. Okay, what else? I noticed the trash removal budget is up pretty high, that's almost $200,000. So it's almost half of that new revenue number that you shared with us. So that's concerning on a go-forward basis. And then finally, Shawshing Tech used to come and talk to the Board of Selectmen way back in the day. Charlie Lyons used to show up, and it was a show when he did, was fantastic. And nobody knows the foundation budget formula than Charlie Lyons, and he's still out there on LinkedIn, I see him from time to time. But we don't see the superintendent from Shawshing Tech, I think there's an interim at the moment, I'm not really sure. We see our representatives from Shawshing Tech come and talk to us about what their budget ask is and their increases. And so I don't know what the rest of the board's position is, but I think it might be interesting to extend that invitation to Shawshing Tech and ask them to come back and talk to us about what their needs are, because we do have a number of our student learners in there, in that school. It's an important part of what we offer to our community and our educational mix, and some of our tax dollars go to fund part of it. So I think it would be a good idea, see if they'd be willing to come talk to us a little bit more and give us a little bit more transparency into what they're doing over there. So anyway, that kind of sums up my thoughts. Again, thank you very much, Mr. Montori. I look forward to sitting with this document some more and digging into it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. How about, uh, Mr. Krabman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I want to thank the town manager once again for putting this, you know, this presentation together so the residents can go through the nitty gritty as we always do each year, going online. I think it's very important to see the residents see these numbers. One of the things that we really didn't hit on is the COVID reimbursements for our budget. So I know we've, we've paid nurses, we've paid... Can you speak to that, just on that, like how much we've, you know, stayed in February?
Sure, sure. So we've, there have been different grants that we've received in regard to COVID. The Board of Health received some funding early on to, for assistance. The schools have received money for various items. And then the KES Act that was allocated to the town was approximately $2.7 million. We've only had, you know, $200,000 to $300,000 worth of reimbursements to date from the KES Act, but we are preparing a reimbursement to go in in the next couple of weeks that will be larger than that, to cover our costs for nursing, help from nurses in regard to contact tracing, reimbursements for overtime, other costs incurred for facilities. So I'll have a better number. I hope to have to report at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, but we'll probably have one of our larger reimbursements, reimbursement requests going in over the next couple of weeks. So.
Yeah, I mean, usually we come up with our list of priorities and the things that we hear from residents, and one of the biggest ones has always been sidewalks and road improvements. And I think this year is getting our kids back to school full-time and getting the senior center open and getting everybody back to activities and making it safe and getting it ready for that. So, you know, that funding that we have, you know, prioritizing how we can get the kids back to school full-time, get it safe for them, and the senior center open, I think that's a priority of the town's, how we can spend some of that money, and making our fields and parks safe as well for the kids to get down there. When we're looking at the numbers out here, I mean, we're doing a level budget, we're not raising anything, we're not really putting in, there's nothing sexy about this budget. We've cut it down to slim numbers, and I thank you for doing that. But you can see from some of the revenues that's coming in, you know, especially the hotels and the, and the meal taxes, it's been very difficult. And, you know, as we're doing this, I want to give a shout out to our assistant town manager, Steve Sadwick. When this happened, you know, we met as a board, we had internal conversations in how to help the local businesses, and he did a great job stepping up and being the contact point for all of us, so that, you know, if you call town hall, you had somebody to speak to. And I'm hoping that, you know, obviously, you can see how the revenues are down, and I hope the residents see that and support our local restaurants and businesses, you know, supporting yourself. Those numbers are hurting our budget, and, you know, we're going to keep them in business, make them survive to be able to keep, you know, going forward. I want them to be around when better times happen. But this is a great budget, it's, you know, skin and bones, so thank you for putting it together for us. That's all I have, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you.
Okay, just short and sweet, because the board, I don't want to duplicate efforts here, just a couple of things. I think it's important, as Mr. Krabman just noted, you know, this was, Mr. Montori, we always kind of hold your feet to the fire in the Department of Heads, and here's another example of listening and working with the Department of Heads here to be, I always say "pence your pennies," "pence your pennies." I think that's demonstrated through this budget. And just for the residents, you know, we haven't used a stabilization fund or any of the enterprise funds. So yeah, we do have reserves, golf a bit, hopefully we don't have to use those, but I think it was important not to kind of touch those, just go around in lieu of, like, no one has a crystal ball. So I think you did a great job with the Department of Heads on a very tight budget. You know, we'll never be happy until it's 0%, but until that, I think it's important too to, we call out the debt exclusion. I mean, you know, $11 million within our budget, so hopefully, as the sewer pills off in the next couple of years, and we can potentially refinance, I know that was brought up, you know, that's how, you know, potentially we'll even save more money for the town moving forward. So great job across the board. I have no further questions, and much of my questions would just be duplicates of the board, so I thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just, I just wanted to also mention, Mr. Dick asked a question about future capital improvements, and I should have mentioned that the North State, North Fire Station is going to be one of our priority areas after the, over the next five years to get addressed.
Mr. Montori, okay, but I'll only say is, as you, as you go through the budget, especially with the Finance Committee, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. If we ever have to take a step back as a town, we've talked about this, you know, we'll take a step back as a town, a community, you know, we can always call a special meeting. Hopefully, that's not the case, but just to let, to let residents know, I mean, we're just, we're keeping a very close pulse on it based on what's going to come in, both at the state level, fed level, and local level, and we'll have to make an adjustment. Hopefully, we won't have to, you know, but we'll be prepared to do so if required, and that's, I think that's all we can offer to the residents, so, okay, thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, just one last thing to the thing. I sent that out in the chat, I know we were talking about it when the governor was going to make his presentation, but the governor's scheduled to make his State of the State address on January 26th. So, you know, if residents want to see what's happening and talking about revenues, tune in, and we'll be watching as well.
All right, Mr. Montori, I think we have just a little bit more business, then we'll be, we'll call it, we'll call it a night.
Yes, I should have one more item, Mr. Chairman, that's opening and closing of the special town, the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants. The warrants usually open around this time and close towards the end of February. We usually have, obviously, the annual town meeting for us Monday in May. We have a special town meeting that's Wednesday, I believe, it's going to be May 3rd for the annual and May 5th for the continuation of the annual, and May 5th for the, for the special town meeting. So if it's okay, I'd like to see if the board would, I just want to double check the date on the, yeah, it's 3rd and the 5th. So if the board could open the warrant for the May 3rd and May 5th Annual Special Town Meeting, starting, starting tomorrow, January 20th, and closing the warrant on February 19th, that gives approximately a month for warrant articles. We're not expecting a lot of warrant articles within, from the town departments. Big one, big article this year will be, I think I've said this for the last two years, will be the zoning bylaw review. Committee will be bringing forward the zoning bylaw changes, so we're going to try to keep the warrants pretty straightforward and, other than the budget, the enterprise fund budgets and collective bargaining agreements which go on the warrants, and some of the other standard warrant articles, we're not expecting any other major warrant articles.
Hey, will you look at in the form of a motion?
Yes, please.
Mr. Town, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open up the warrant for the May 3rd, May 5th Annual and Special Town Meeting and propose that we close the warrants on February 19th.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
You have an motion, a second roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Mark Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronach.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Any, any additional business, Mr. Montori?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for your patience tonight and your review of the budgets for all members.
Okay, and just for, just for the residents, we're going to have a quick turnaround here for the Selectmen, we'll, we'll be back in action next week, right? Yeah, the 26th. So, so we'll save board member reports for next week. I'd like to close, kind of on a sad note, where Tewksbury lost a good one this weekend. On behalf of the board, I'd like to express our condolences to the Hancock family. Mr. Al Hancock, he was a resident for Tewksbury for 60 years. He was a beloved husband of Ann Hancock, who, he was married, had a wedding anniversary in September, this September, for 59 years, and Al was a resident, like I said, for 60 years. He passed away at the age of 82 this weekend. Al was a great man in the community, he was retired Tewksbury Fire Department Lieutenant and an Army veteran, and since their wedding, Alan and Ann resided at Tewksbury, where they have raised five children as well. So, so Al will be missed, you know, very sad in the community, so I just wanted to just say that, that's all. So with that being said, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, final roll call tonight, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronach.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay, thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.